So if you're here specifically for that item, you can go home.[4.13][4.13](laughter) Okay, our first ceremonial matter this evening is the Community Emergency Response Team graduation. Is there... That comes later. Great.
Thanks, Mayor McQuaid. Thank you Albany City Council and Manager Leach. This was a small class this year, but they were all dedicated, hard-working individuals. By the way, my name is Michael Robb. I work for your City Fire Department. We spent eight weeks... There's a fellow CERT member from the past here. Eight weeks learning how to assess buildings post-disaster, how to take care of people who are hurt and sick, how to put out small fires and the like for eight weeks, three hours each week. So 24 hours out of busy lives. So thank you so much for this current CERT class. So if I could have Lieutenant Tim Smizer come up. He'd like to present each of you with a pin. I have a certificate for the CERT class of 2017 Spring. And Chief Calkins is here to shake your hand and say thank you. And just a quick thanks again to the Alameda County Sheriff's Department who supported us with funds to supply us for the class. So thanks to them. So first, CERT Spring 2017 graduate Raymond.[103.04][103.04](applause) So there are two more people. Jerry was also here in the class and Jen as well. Just to plug the CERT program real quick, these are the people that will be helping you out in a disaster. If we are incapacitated, the Public Safety Department personnel are incapacitated because of a disaster, because we're doing other stuff, these are the shoes on the ground that will be taking care of all of us in this city. So I can't thank them enough, and your help is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.[179.59][179.59](applause)
Thank you to all of you who took that class. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy, and we all do really appreciate your efforts. And thank you to the Fire Department for taking care of the class and doing it. Thank you. Okay, next we have recognition of Fire Chief Lance Calkins for receiving the California Fire Chief Certification. City Manager Penelope Crumpley will introduce the presentation.
Yes. Well, we're honored in at least two ways this evening. First of all, our Chief Calkins is receiving the California Fire Chief Certification. And I have to add that only... He is only the 34th person to receive this esteemed certification. So we are the 34th chief, so we're very happy to be able to honor him this evening. We are also honored by the fact that we have State Fire Marshal Dennis Matheson here from Sacramento to present the certification. And Chief Matheson has been with the California Fire Service for over 30 years. So please welcome them both with a big round of applause.[251.01][251.01](applause)
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council and Chief Calkins for inviting me this evening. This is one of the perks of my job. I really do appreciate the opportunity to acknowledge hard-working members of the California Fire Service, and your Fire Chief is certainly one of those that's demonstrated that effort. Already stole my thunder. He is the 34th Certified Fire Chief. And there's a lot that goes into this, and I'll just tell you a little bit about that. It's the capstone of the California Fire Service career ladder. It's considered a goal for upward mobility and achieving it as highly-desired qualification. Candidates to do this, candidates have to go through a rigorous assessment process and demonstrate solid proficiency in all aspects of fire service administration. They must also undergo a lengthy and thorough interview in front of a panel of fire service and community leaders. And Chief Calkins was able to successfully complete that process. So on behalf of CAL FIRE, Office of the State Fire Marshal, Stay Board of Fire Services, and myself, it's my privilege to present Chief Calkins with his Fire Chief Certification Thank you, Chief. That was a great presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to go through this process. It was challenging, and I didn't know if I was going to make it through, but, you know, I stuck with it and used my education to go through the process. Thanks to City Council, City Manager, all my partners in EMS and fire. The last 30 years, I would have never been able to achieve any success without the people that I work with. So I thank them. I also like to thank my advocate, who was part of the process, who had to go through this, is one of the rules. Salinas Fire Chief Ed Rodriguez, thank you very much for showing up. And we came on Stockton Fire together in the late '80s, so we've kind of still maintained, you know, best friendship throughout the process. And he mentored me to get to this point. And I'm very happy and proud to have received this. And thank you, everybody, for their time and effort for that.
Are there any other comments?
Good evening, Council and City staff and public of Albany. My name's Lieutenant Smizer. I'm with the Albany Fire Department. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate what the other chief had said and how much hard work and how lucky we are to have Chief Calkins. Just quickly, Chief Calkins has got a 30-year career. He left Stockton and promoted through all the ranks and left as a deputy chief, and we were lucky enough to land him as a fire chief here. What he has brought to us is sometimes somebody that comes from a different background and has a big-city knowledge. And then can Albany fire and take something and make it an economy of scale? And he's given us new, fresh ideas, and we appreciate that. And that's all I have. So thank you very much.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 3-3. It is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. We have Lillian Rogers from the Alameda County DA's office and Nicole Radford from Adult Protective Services to say a few words to us.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Council members, City staff, as well as the community of Albany. I am Nicole Radford, and this is the third time I've appeared before you in the month of June for elder abuse awareness. So I want to thank you for continuing to place this item on your agenda and to continue to bring awareness to the needs of vulnerable seniors and dependent adults. I am one of four supervisors, only four, that serves all of Alameda County. The staff I supervise work very creatively with a very limited budget to meet the multiple needs of vulnerable elders and dependent adults. So again, we want to thank you for what you do within your city by funding the Albany Senior Center. And we will continue to work diligently in collaboration with local law enforcement, with staff from the District Attorney's Office, with other community nonprofits, as well as family members and other concerned citizens to promote the safety and the well-being of vulnerable seniors and dependent adults. So thank you very much for continuing to include us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and the public bureaus here in Albany. Thank you so much for allowing the District Attorney's Office to be recognized. And thank you so much for contributing to the safe and well-being of the senior citizens. As we know, as we age, we age with grace and with maturity. And along with that aging, the District Attorney's Office have, out of 20 victim consultants, we have two who deal specifically with the senior and dependent abuse. We do the best that we possibly can to prevent the prevention of elder abuse. And with the combination of everyone in this room, along with all the departments, and along with the staff at the police and the District Attorney's Office, we're going to strive to even continue to do greater as we age, because the age of the population of seniors are getting more and more abundant. And the crime that the seniors have to endure, along with the dependent adults, are getting larger and larger. And so we hope that with each concerned citizen of the community, that we will do the best we possibly can to keep the safe being of the citizens as we mature and age. And thank you so much on behalf of the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, the next item is Report on Action Taken in Closed Session. Council gave staff direction on how to proceed on the closed-session item, which was the Albany Hill Cross. We will also provide a public update on June 19th on this issue. Okay, it brings us to the Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull an item?
5:13, please.
I have two. 5:13, the Salary Schedule, and 5:14, the Award of the Contract for Lonnie Greenway.
Anyone else? I'd like to pull 5:7. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to pull an item? Okay, Vice Mayor Pilch, would you like to read yours?
So I just wanted some clarification on this item. Number one, this is something that comes to us every year or every two years, I can't recall.
Every year.
Every year. And so the idea is that certain tax measures were allowed to adjust the costs based on the increasing cost that the tax we're raising is paying for. So we're increasing the cost of the tax to the taxpayers because of what the citizens provided. And there's... But there's one of the tax measures that, for some reason, did not have this stipulation that we could increase, that we could do an increase in fees every year. Is that... Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, the service charges under Proposition 218 have to go through a notice in a public hearing and an opportunity for a majority protest before those can be adjusted. And that law authorizes the City Council to make a one-time authorization, subject to the notice and protest procedure, to approve future CPI-type increases for a period of five years. So that was done about seven years ago, and then it maxed out. Now it's being brought back for that type of authorization. So that one is under some different rules than the other taxes.
But I thought there was the paramedic one as well. There was one that we passed that was... We're not able to... It's blocking, we're not able to raise...
The original measure that was voter-approved didn't include authorization for future increases, then it can't be increased except by a vote of the people.
Oh, that's right. And that was my question. So we have to bring it back to the voters for that change to that tax measure? If we... And if that is something that is a possibility, it's either before... Is that one that sunsets?
It's either when it sunsets or if you need to recommend or want an increase that's outside of your authority.
But we could bring that back to the voters when it does sunset, or even before that.
Yeah, if the council felt that the tax was simply a too-low rate or wasn't adequate to fund the necessary services, and you wanted to ask the voters to approve either a specific increase or future CPI-type increases, that could be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Question... Majority protest basically means taking it to the voters. Is that correct?
And then there are different types of majority protest, but in this context, a majority protest means that there's mailed notice and out to all the property owners who are going to be subject to the tax. There's a, I think, a 45-day... There's a specified notice period. And then they... If a majority of the property owners do not object or protest, then it goes forward.
I pulled 5:7, which is the bike criterion. And I guess I have more comments than really questions. It seems like, from reading the entire report and all of the... Come on up, Shelley. All of the comments in the survey where people are coming into Albany from other places, that it's a really good opportunity for our local merchants to advertise the restaurants and the shops and whatever. So I certainly hope that there's a real effort by the criterion people to get the word out to the merchants to kind of figure out a way to really maximize our exposure. Do you know how much goes to the mountain bike team, the percentage, or how that works?
I think the number for last year was $1,000.
Okay.
Which I don't... I think may have caused them to go in the negative, but they made sure to make the contribution.
Great, okay. And they talk about having a youth bicycle event. And we do that several times a year with the Bike to School Days and the APEL Bike Radio. And so I'm hoping that they're able to coordinate that with some of the events that are already going on and make them perhaps a little bigger or kind of tie those together. And then just the last thing, the bike race goes into the city of El Cerrito. And I just want to be sure that El Cerrito is fully on board and doesn't feel like we're leeching over into their territory.
They're waiting to hear what happens here. They have to pay a pretty... I think they pay a fee over in El Cerrito for that street closure. And so they're waiting to see what happens in Albany before they walk over and pay a fee. So I think they're going to walk it over. They're also basing on... In 2015, we did kind of a bulk street closure staff report for various street closures throughout the year for a three-year period. And this year is actually included in that staff report. So El Cerrito knows... Had known in the past that it had been approved. So now I think we're in this waiting game to see what happens for this encroachment permit. We asked them to come back so we could come back to council based on some of the feedback we got from neighbors.
Great. And you'll be coming back next year also?
Yeah, that's the plan, is to allow... When you do the three-year, you don't give people chances in between to give their input. So that's our goal, to bring it back each year.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a quick question. I believe in 2015, the credit was on the traditional course, which is just the square around the high school. Last year, it made that L up into presumably El Cerrito. That's what you're referring to. And when I was reading the documents, it referred to the course as being the traditional course. So what's happening in 2017? Traditional or extended?
The course that's in the application packet. And I have Hussein is here also from the organizing group, from the Berkeley Bicycle Club, if you want to hear about the course. Want to come up, Hussein?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I personally know Helen Meredith, so I can always talk to them.
It's the course that's in the packet, is what's happening.
It's the what? The L. It's the L.
Okay. Thank you. And Penelope, you pulled two.
Yes, for the updated salary schedule, I am pulling Exhibit B. So this will just pertain to the SEIU contract changes for the salary schedule. And we'll be bringing back the information for Schedule B at another time. So this just has to do with the SEIU Exhibit A, which is only the SEIU increases that are part of their current contract.
Any good reasons to pull it in?
The staff report was not adequate to describe the content of Exhibit B, and nor was the resolution. So that was just in my own oversight.
Thank you. And 5:14?
On 5:14, we are pulling that item completely, and we'll be coming back to council at the next council meeting. We need to do a little more analysis on funding.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Can you call roll, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Hey, councilmember reports on meetings attended and announcement of future meetings, city manager report, and comments. Councilmember Moss, would you like to report on new meetings?
Well, I turned in something. I went to the Alameda County Housing Authority meeting on the 10th. These were... A lot of these housing authority meetings are pretty... You know, we're just passing or getting information reports on federal documentation that's required. What I made note of in the report was that, as I've noticed for the last year or so, we continue to drop the number of houses that are eligible for vouchers in Albany, basically because the rents keep going up here faster than the voucher program is allowing. So we're down from 28 in 2015 to 23, homes that are families that are receiving vouchers. The most interesting thing in the Recycling Board and Planning and Organization Committee was that Castor Valley has been working on a once-every-two-weeks, as opposed to once-a-week trash pickup, to seeing how that works, because more people are recycling and using the organic waste. And that seems to be working out pretty well. And the main item of interest in the Transportation Commission meeting was an update on Planned Bay Area 2040, which is in progress.
Thank you. And I do have a question. I think that you mentioned that in the Air Quality Management District, they're taking applications for electric charging stations?
Yes. Actually, I think staff may know this, but the Bay Air Quality Management District is ... Has new grant money for electric charging stations. This wasn't really part of the agenda, but this was mentioned.
Yeah, we're applying for that.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Okay, and Councilmember Nathan, do you want to report on your meetings?
Yeah, I did a written report on the Regional Task Force on Alta Bates Subcommittee meeting that I attended on the 25th. There will be another Subcommittee meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. If people are interested in the Alta Bates issue and would be interested in attending a meeting, please let me know. The other was the Tom Bates Regional Sports Complex, which Pete Moss and I attended together. And that recommendation was included in the consent calendar and approved. Apparently, the Association of Sports Field Users has withdrawn their objections to the recommendation. Today, Nick Pilch and I attended the Association of Bay Area Governments General Session. It was heavily administrative, as everyone here knows. I think the A-BAG and the MTC are in the process of a merger. The one kind of big-picture item of interest is simply that as the clash of perspectives continues between the A-BAG perspective, looking at things through a local government lens, versus the MTC perspective of looking at things through a transportation and economic lens, clearly the MTC... That the two perspectives are clashing. The two organizations have taken different positions on an important bill on housing, streamlining housing construction. So it does appear that they still have a lot of challenges in that merger. And we need to think, as a local government, about the risks and opportunities involved as housing is raised to the regional level, and our voice in it could be somewhat reduced as a local government. I think that's everything.
Are there any other reports from councilmembers?
Sure, I'll give my oral report. I was at the General Assembly. As Councilmember Nathan points out, just a few facts. I believe July 1st, the staffs will be merged. And then they will go into a period of deciding how they're going to merge the organizations. But they'll have a joint staff, but two different boards for some time. It's very interesting. So in reverse chronological order, I attended that. I attended the School District's Sustainability and Integrated Design Committee meeting, where we discussed the design of the middle school annex. And we moaned the fact that we had what was almost a complete design in front of us, and yet the sustainability has not been brought into the mix early on. We were basically being presented a complete design without having the ability to influence that very much. It was not quite complete, so we are trying to convene next week to give further input. They did... The School District did get a grant to get PV panels on the entire complex. So that's really good. That's very good news. They didn't think... They did not budget for that, but fortunately, they did get a grant. I went to the League of California Cities East Bay Division Meeting, where the new president of the League of California Cities spoke. That was nice. I went to Bike About Town. I encourage all of you to participate this summer in those, third Friday, I believe. I went to the East Bay Community Energy Meeting, where we mostly gave direction to consultants. As we start to build up the organization, we gave directions to consultants as to how we'd like to proceed and what they'd like to... What they should bring back to us. The Citizens Advisory Body is almost appointed, and the CEO of that organization will be selected very soon as well. And finally, I went to the Beach Meeting, which I think almost all of us, if not all of us, attended right here in the council chambers. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more item. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has something called the EV, Electric Vehicle Coordinating Council. And they... I got on the mailing list somehow at one point. They'll be meeting this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Bay Area Metro Center, which is where MTC and other organizations are. I was planning on attending. I don't know if I will be able to. So if other council members are able to make it or interested, please let me know. And I would... If staff is able to attend, I would encourage staff member to attend as well. Although I think we probably are moving in the right direction. It's an opportunity for cities to get together and talk about their various efforts in terms of electric vehicles. Thank you.
I did... I thought of... I knew there was something that I missed. There is a meeting on regional coordination on homelessness coming up on June 19th. And I don't know if anyone else is planning to attend. I was... I am planning to attend, unless I hear otherwise that I should not. The point-in-time count came out, has been released, and found that there are 66 unsheltered people living in Albany. And I think that Isabel Laduck from the city staff is looking into where those people are sleeping. I went walking the creeks and the railroad tracks, trying to figure it out. I didn't see where 66 people could be living, but that's what the count was. And we're... Hopefully, we'll get more information about that. But Berkeley is trying to pull together the different cities in our area to talk about coordination.
Thank you. Anywhere else? Okay, so maybe we have a city manager report?
I just have a couple of quick things. If you haven't been down by the... On the west side of Albany, both the Pear Street Park... Peggy Thompson Pear Street Park construction is going quite well, as is the construction for our new Public Works Center. So we hope to be coming back to you in the next couple of meetings to give you ribbon-cutting dates, that we will be having a little ceremony for these things. Finally... dates, that we will be having a little ceremony for these things finally getting done and us moving in and being able to have a park to play with, but that's it for today.
Thank you. One announcement that I'd like to make is that on Saturday, June 10th, this coming Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, the Community Center is a community forum, building community, bringing people together across differences. This is City of Albany, Berkeley Mall Health and University Village, I believe. Dr. Kenneth Hardy, internationally recognized clinician, author and trainer, will facilitate a community workshop on cultural humility with a focus on self-awareness, sensitivity, openness and learning from our differences. It's free, there'll be refreshments. Sounds like a wonderful event. Okay, moving to the presentation. Comprehensive annual financial report and annual audit for fiscal year 2015, 16 and allocation of year-end available fund balance. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Bedawi from Bedawian Associates is here to give us a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Ahmed Bedawi, partner with Bedawian Associates, and I'll present for you today the results of the 2016 audit. And I start first by letting you know what we're going to cover today. Even though it's a long agenda, it would take me about maybe 10, 15 minutes maximum to go through the entire presentation and, or 10 minutes, and I'll be open for any questions. But please interrupt me at any time if you have questions during my presentation. But I'll basically let you know who was the engagement team on the audit of the city, what were the deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas we emphasized on, what kind of audit opinion we issued, and some of the numbers in the financial statements, provide you some of the required communications, a brief update on the new accounting standards, and see if you have any questions for me. In terms of the engagement team, this is the composition of the engagement team. I was the engagement partner. We always have a quality control partner in the background. Her role is to review my work and making sure that I adhere to professional standards. Just a second set of eyes on all of our work. We had Metash Desai as the manager, we had also an IT specialist, and we had two professional staff on the audits. Excuse me. In terms of the deliverables and the scope of our audit, obviously, our main task was to give an opinion on the city's basic financial statements or the comprehensive annual financial report. That's really the big financial statements that includes all your funds and all your assets. In addition to that, there were several compliance audits that we performed. We basically performed a compliance audit on the Transportation Development Act, on the Measure B funds, the Measure BB funds, the vehicle registration fee funds, and the police and fire relief pension fund. In addition to that, we have also issued our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. Report on compliance with major federal awards, which the city didn't really have that this year. We also prepared the state controllers report. Those are the annual financial transaction reports submitted to the state of California. We perform an agreed-upon procedures on your GAN limit, your appropriation limit, and then finally, the communication with the city council, which is what I'm doing today. Areas of primary audit emphasis, we had two areas that we emphasized on. Obviously, we audited all your account balances, but those two areas required some special attention, and not necessarily because of anything that relates to the city of Albany, but just the nature of those accounts. Revenues are always a higher risk area, and obviously, it's a very significant account. So we give it special attention by sending confirmations to third parties. We confirm your property taxes, your sales tax, some of your franchise taxes, and some of the other significant revenues. We also do some confirmation on the sewer revenues distributed by the county. For pension, pension obviously is a very big liability, and there is a lot of requirements on how we should audit pension. So we do a variety of procedures from testing the information that the city submit to Calpers every pay period, the earnings of the employees and their census data. We also obtain audit reports from the auditors of Calpers that provide us information about, specific information about the city of Albany. And we also obtain actuarial study on the Calpers pool to basically look at the total liability prepared by Calpers. In terms of the auditor's report, we have issued an unmodified opinion, that's basically a clean opinion, and the audit report stated that the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard and also with government auditing standards. What an unmodified opinion means, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that significant accounting policies have been consistently applied, that estimates are reasonable, disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. We had some material weaknesses in internal controls that were identified, and we're going to discuss those in, in the next few slides. Just wanted to give you a little bit of a summary about what's in your financial statements. So this slide is really the composition of your assets, and like most of our cities, your two largest assets are your cash and investments and your capital assets. Your capital assets include your buildings, your infrastructure, your machinery and equipment, and all of those types of assets. No major fluctuation over the last three years, fairly consistent over the last three years. So really, nothing here for me to comment on. On the following slide is the composition of your liabilities, and you can see that your largest liability is your pension liability at 23, almost 23 and a half million, followed by the long-term debt, and this include your bond pay bill, your loan pay bill, your leases pay bill, all those types of other liabilities, and that's about 22 and a half million. Your pension liability went up by about maybe $4 million compared to last year, and that's really due to a couple of reasons. The Calpers plans, they all have seen increase in the liability. It's just the performance of Calpers investment wasn't what they projected to be, and that led to an increase. In addition to that, also your police and fireman pension, pension plan, the separate plan from Calpers, this one also had some significant increases due to change in investment rate of return, basically change in actuarial assumptions. And all those increases had to be recognized in the, in the current year because this plan has no active employees, so you can't really spread those changes over time, so you have to recognize them immediately. So that really caused the increase in your pension liability in this year. This slide is really the composition of your equity, your net position, which is your assets minus your liabilities. Equities are normally breaking, broken down into three main components. The first one is a net investment in capital assets, that's obviously the largest component, but this is really the component that is not in a spendable form. This is the, the money that you invested over the years in your infrastructure assets and your buildings, and it is not really, in order to become spendable, you have to first sell those assets, pay off any debts relating to those assets, and usually, infrastructure assets are not assets that you can actually sell for, for most of the time. The restricted amounts or amounts that are restricted by a third party, so those would be any unspent grant proceeds, any unspent bond proceeds, gas tax money, anything that basically the city council cannot change the purpose of, of those funds. And then finally, the unrestricted amount, which is the amount that is under your control, is a deficit, almost $7 million. You know, that's, we see that quite often now. You can see that in 2014, you were at $15 million positive, and then all of a sudden, you went to $5 or $6 million deficit, and that was purely the result of implementing the new pension standards. You never used to account for the pension liability on your balance sheet, but starting in 2015, you started doing that, and that really kind of ate away your, your equity, basically. We, we've seen a lot of agencies in that situation, not all of them, but quite a few. In terms of changes in that position, that's basically your operating results, and this is, keep in mind, this is not really focusing on the general fund or any other fund. This is purely focusing on a full accrual basis, overall city operations. And again, the main reason why you're seeing this decline is because of the changes that happened during the, in the pension plan, the changes in assumption that happened in the police and fire pension plan. But focusing more on the, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. This slide normally presents to you what we call the net cost of service to tax revenues. The net cost of service is what we basically refer to as the cost of running all the operating departments minus any revenues that those operating departments are, are able to generate on their own. So for example, the police department, if they are generating fines and tickets, those would be offset against the operating cost. And the idea is to see whether your tax revenue is sufficient to cover the deficit in, in those operating departments. Over the years, your tax revenues have always been more than the cost of service, so it was sufficient. You can see that this year, they're almost exactly the same, and again, the reason for that is the changes in the pension plan that happened during that year. But looking at the general fund, for example, you see that the general fund actually have done better this year compared to last year. Your unrestricted fund balance, the fund balance that is under your control that have no legal restriction, outside legal restriction, is about 8.3 million. Your annual expenditures were about 17 million. So that's about 48%, your fund balance is about 48% of your annual expenditures. So in the very unlikely scenario that all your revenue sources stop coming in, you probably can continue to pay your bills for about six months using your available fund balance. The recommended ratio by the Government Finance Officers Association is no less than two months, so obviously, six months is decent. You may have already designated those funds for other purposes, all we're saying is that those are under your control and you can change those designations at any time. Focusing a little bit on pension, because obviously, this is really the, the biggest challenge that we see in, in most of the agencies that we audit. So I want to give you the funded status of each of your, of your pension plans. So this is regarding the police and fire relief pension plan, and you can see that the unfunded liability is about 5.3 million as of the most recent actuary evaluation, and this basically increased by about 2.5 million from last year. And that's mainly due to the change in assumptions that the actuary has, has done. If we look at your Calpers miscellaneous plan, you have about 6.4 million dollars in unfunded liability, and you can see that on basically the last column and the, and the bottom row. And for your safety plan, it's about 11.6 million, the unfunded liability. That's basically the assets minus the liability of the plan. The one thing that I really would like to highlight is the fact that Calpers currently, and, and your numbers are calculated based on a 7.65 rate of return. However, Calpers have already announced that they will be reducing that rate of return to 7% over the next three years. So, and, and actually, when we talk to Calpers, they are basically saying that this is really just a start, that the way they see it is that they're probably going to end up somewhere around 6.5 or maybe even 6%. So I just want to give you an idea about how your numbers will change if those assumptions change. So if the number, currently, your total liabilities for the Calpers plan is about $18 million, and if Calpers change their assumption from 7.65 to 6.65, this number is going to go up to 30 million, 30 million and a half. So obviously, a big increase. And most likely, that Calpers is probably going to go lower than the 6.65 eventually. So what that means is that more required contribution in the future to, to fund the plan, so obviously, it would be a, a big increase for, for everybody, basically.
Is that rate of return what they also call the discount rate?
That is correct.
Is it the same?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, always confused me, the, the term discount rate. Rate of return makes more sense to me.
Yeah, the discount rate is because they have to first calculate how much the, the pension benefits will be and that you'll have to pay in the future, and then discount them back to the present value today. So they use the same rate of return to discount those amounts. So that's why they call it discount rate when they're talking about the liability, but they call it investment rate of return when they call, when they talk about investments.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to provide you the same kind of presentation for the police and fire, the pension relief fund. And you can see that this actuary is a lot more conservative. They are using a 5.33% rate of return, and that gives you a liability of about 5.3 million. If they were to change it to 4.3%, this liability would go up to 6.3, and if they change it to 6.3%, this liability would be 4.3 million. So this is a required disclosure for the reader to see how sensitive your numbers are to these actuarial assumptions, and they're obviously very sensitive to that.
This, this is also a Cal, Calpers?
No, this, this one, this last slide here is the, the closed plan, the, the pension relief fund.
Okay, that's a wholly owned, city-owned?
That is correct. That is a closed plan, so no new members are joining that plan.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah. This is an older plan, a much older plan. The city also offer retiree medical benefits, what we refer to as OPEB. So I just wanted to kind of give you, and the city have two, two different plans, one for the JPA, for the administrative employees, and one for basically everybody else. And this was the cost over the last three years, fairly consistent. You do have an unfunded liability of, for the JPA, about 322,000, and for the rest of the city, about 1.6 million dollars. Next year, those liabilities will also be added to your balance sheet in compliance with a new accounting standard. So you can anticipate an additional maybe $2 million or so to be added to your balance sheet as liability for those medical benefits. Some of the required communications that we're required to communicate to the governing body. Our responsibility as your independent auditors under generally accepted auditing standards is to mainly express an opinion on your financial statements, whether they're fairly stated or not, to evaluate the city's internal controls and comment on them, and if we have any, any recommendation, evaluate compliance with laws, regulations, contracts and grants, evaluate the tone at the top, and really assessing whether management send the right message to the rest of the organization about the importance of controls, how do they respond to audit findings, do they come up with corrective action plans, do they address those findings. We're responsible for ensuring that your financial statements are clear and transparent, and finally, we're responsible for communicating, communicating, I'm sorry, with the governing body.
The tone at the top, what does that?
Yeah, so basically, obviously, we rely a lot on management. The management make representations for us about, you know, for example, that they recorded all transactions, that they're not aware of any fraud, and also with, with the city council, that we basically want to make sure that we're not in a situation where we're giving audit findings and they're just being filed away, no one is really addressing them, no one is really concerned about what those issues are. Obviously, in a situation like that, we will be, most likely, we will, we will have to resign because we will have no one to talk to if we are coming up with issues and, and management or governing body are not really concerned or not addressing them, then obviously, it would not be right for us to continue providing the audit, so. Management have a lot of responsibilities in this process. They're ultimately responsible for the completeness and accuracy of those financial statements. They're also responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls, for making all financial records available to us during the audit process, for adjusting the financial statements to correct any errors, establishing controls to prevent and detect fraud, inform us of all known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, and take corrective action on audit findings. In terms of our independence, we, it is our responsibility to maintain our independence, so the city doesn't really have to worry about that part. We obviously evaluate all the different services that we offer the city, make sure that it does not impair our independence. We also make sure that all of our team are independent from the city, that they don't have any relations with city employees or anything of that nature. In terms of the timing of the audit, the audit was not performed during the timeframe communicated in our engagement letter. Obviously, we are in June of 2017, and we are presenting the numbers of June 30, 2016, so it's almost one year. So it's just really, obviously, the timeliness of the information, the financial information is crucial, otherwise, it just becomes history and it just gets filed away. I'm going to talk a little bit more about why the audit was delayed, but that is the fact that the audit was delayed. I'm not going to read through those, but this is basically a listing of the new accounting standards that the city implemented during fiscal year 2016. And also, I wanted to let you know that some of the numbers in the financial statements are estimates, and it is totally acceptable to have estimates in, in the financial statements as long as there is a reasonable basis behind those estimates. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea about what are these estimated numbers. So your claims liability, your pension liability, some of those numbers are estimated. I also, I'm not going to read this, but some of the sensitive disclosure in your financial statements, some of the disclosure that we think is important to enhance the understanding of the numbers, some of them are listed here that we believe are important to the reader. In terms of difficulties in- In terms of difficulties encountered during our audit, like I mentioned, the completion of the audit was delayed because we encountered difficulties in obtaining the needed information. And we also had a lot of adjustments. Basically, after the city closes books, we performed our audit, and we found that there were numbers that needed correction. So here is a listing of all the adjustments that we came up with. Some were recorded by the city, some, the city decided not to record them, and normally, the ones that the city decided not to record, they were either immaterial or something of that nature. Obviously, we would not be okay if an entry is material and the city decide not to record it, then obviously, that will impact our opinion. However, all the ones that the city decided not to record were not significant, and we were okay with that decision. I'm happy to discuss any of them, but those are just for your information. And then, there was no significant risks or exposure that were identified to us, other than matters that are communicated to us in the legal letters. We identified some deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we considered to be material weaknesses. The first one is the delays in closing the books. Basically, the city was just not ready for the audit, and that's mainly because of turnover, new system implementation, basically, just a lot of things that were going on at the time, and just the city was not able to close the books timely and be ready for the audit and provide us the information that were needed. Another material weakness that we had was the bank reconciliations, that the bank reconciliations were not done for a long period of time. Obviously, the city caught up, otherwise, we would not have issued our opinion, but we think that this is a very risky thing not to do, because the bank reconciliations are an extremely important control to make sure all your deposits are making it to the bank, that all the disbursements were correct and proper. So definitely, we want this to be more timely. It should be done monthly, should not be delayed until the end of the year, and then do the whole year, all at the same time.
Shouldn't it, I mean, I'm used to audit, I'm used to preparing for an audit in the nonprofit world, and we always have the bank reconciliation done by someone outside of management. We have someone, either the, our auditing firm or another outside CPA will do the reconciliation. We don't do that in government, or?
Maybe in the nonprofit world is different, but definitely, auditors are not allowed to do that, because they are not part of your organization, so they should not be the one doing the accounting, or definitely not doing the bank reconciliation. We reviewed the bank reconciliation to make sure that the methodology that was used was proper, that all reconciling items were correct, but no, the...
But we use an out, in nonprofit, we use an outside?
Absolutely. You can do, you can definitely do that.
Yeah, but, okay, but that's not...
But not us.
No, no, understood, but that's not, is that standard in, that's not standard?
It's not standard in city government, no. I mean, you can, definitely, if you're short on staff, you can hire somebody that can do those tasks for you, and we see cities do that oftentimes when they have turnover. But most of the time, for a long-term solution, it's city staff that does those reconciliations. Just wanted to also let you know that we normally request what we call representation letters from management before we issue any financial statements. Those representation letters are basically management telling us that they have disclosed to us all known facts, that they have recorded all transactions, that they own all the assets, that they're not aware of any fraud, and a variety of representations that they make for us. We're not aware that management has consulted with any other accounting firms as it relates to the audit. We did not have any other material communications, other than our engagement letter and our representation letters. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and conditions, and we have not become aware of any fraud or illegal act that were not disclosed to us. And then, finally, this slide is just to let you know all the new accounting standards that will be coming your way. So you can see, staff will be busy for the next few years, but I'm more than happy to discuss any of them, but I'm not going to go through them unless you want me to. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity.
Are there questions for council?
I guess I have a question that's perhaps more for staff about the bank reconciliation. Can you explain how that didn't happen, or?
Susan can elaborate. She's here in David's stead. He's home with a fever, so we hope he gets better quickly. She also was very instrumental in getting the CAFER done while David was working on the operating budget as well. It boils down to a four-letter word with an S on the end, and it's munis. So I don't know that council can fully appreciate adopting a brand-new software, financial software system, that along with the fact that the entire finance department is 100% turned over in the last two years. So there's zero institutional knowledge. So we did have a lot of consultants come in to try to help us out. That is something that as soon as this audit was over and the operating budget is adopted, we have one more set of training to go through, because in addition to the finance staff learning the software two weeks before they're trying to teach it to us, and us bringing in outside consultants to teach us the software as well, we have one more module, which will be our project module that we're going to learn over the summer. But our hope is that, our number-one goal is always to get the audit done on time, and hopefully, we can keep the staff that we have for a while and improve on the tenure there, but those were the primary reasons for the delays.
Okay, thanks.
I have one question about compensated absences on page 36. For this year and going forward, it seems it's projected at 1.2 million, which seems high. Is there a way to reduce it? Is that a problem? Are we okay?
Compensated absence, you're referring to vacation and sick leave pay?
Right.
I mean, I guess the way to reduce it would be for the city to cap some of those accruals or change the MOUs. We just basically make sure that whatever's in the MOUs and whatever employees have earned in vacation and sick leave, we look at the number of hours that were earned, and we use the pay rate, the most current pay rate, and that gives us the final number that should be in the compensated absences.
I guess my question is, is it a problem to be carrying that, that much deferred compensation, for lack of a better term?
It's hard for me to say. I mean, it's not unusual. So we see it in a lot of cities, bigger numbers even. Whether you believe that this is going to be a burden in the future or not, obviously, it's a different story.
I think Susan can provide a little additional information that would be helpful.
Can I ask a quick question first? I mean, basically, all that is, is that you're required to accrue as a liability unused sick and annual leave balances, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the way to get those down would be to have everyone go on vacation or get sick, and that would reduce the liability?
Absolutely. You don't have to, it doesn't always mean that you're going to end up paying for it, but the liability that is recorded on your financial statements is what the employee will get paid if they decide to leave. So for example, sick leave, sometimes, it's not all paid, depending on the city. I don't recall exactly what the situation is here, but depending on the city, sometimes you only get paid 50%. So the liability will only reflect 50% of those sick hours. So really, we look at what would the city have to pay if this employee is terminated, either voluntarily or involuntarily. However, of course, like you said, if the employee is not terminated and the user vacation, then this liability will go down, absolutely.
That was a GASB change?
It's a GASB requirement. It's not recent. It's been like that for a few years, definitely.
Okay.
Mayor McQuaid, to answer your question about whether we should be concerned about the level or not, I did do a quick analysis earlier today of the past five years, and we have held steady at 25, and our compensated absences are about, the current portion is about 25% of the total portion, and there has been no large changes. They've been within a couple hundred, the total amount has been within a couple hundred thousand dollars of each other. And just to provide more detail on what Mr. Beddall we said, the sick leave, the level that the city pays out upon retirement is 25% of the total. If they leave due to non-retirement, if they terminate for some reason, then sick leave is not paid out.
Okay, thank you very much. So just sort of a procedure question, one of the things that we're looking at is allocating the budget surplus. Can we do that as sort of a separate item after we kind of look at this?
Sure.
Fine, okay. That's what we're doing then. So was there any, are we ready for public comment?
Just, procedural question now, some of us are just, I guess this is dated May 30th, and we're just getting it today. We'll take it home and read it in bed at night, and then, when we have questions, will we have another opportunity to ask questions, or how will that?
This is simply a receiving of the report. The information doesn't change based on anything that council wants, but between Susan and David, we could certainly answer any of your questions.
Okay, so just, we should address those directly to Susan or David?
Yes.
Okay.
And if there's anything further that we can't answer, obviously, we'll...
You're more than welcome to contact us anytime.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, the other procedural question is, what is, what do we see as the timeline for the next report? What is a timely report, and will we have a timely report the next, in the next cycle?
Yes, the goal is always to finish and be done with the audit by the end of the calendar year, to be presented to council as soon as the hired consultants can generate the information and get it back to us, and we can answer any additional questions. So a more likely scenario would be to present this to you in January or February.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Pils, did you have a question, comment? Okay. Then I'll open it for public comment at this time. Okay, seeing none. I do have one correction, I believe. It states in there on June 30, 2016, actually, Pete Moss was mayor and I was vice mayor, so I think just your dates are a little bit wrong.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
We can make that change.
Okay.
My apologies, that was my error. I provide the information to the auditor on that.
Okay, that's fine. So then, are we ready to look at the proposed budget, the budget surplus and how to allocate
It's Appendix A of our report.
The bottom middle?
Staff, too. Are you looking for the budget slide?
No, this is the budget surplus slide. And for some reason, it's not showing up on here. Council does have it as an appendix in the CAFER, so. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and answering your questions.
Sure, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So if you're wondering, it's the budget surplus.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what page?
It's in the packet. It's this one here.
It's part of the, it's at the end of the first staff report, or end of the staff report, right? Correct?
Oh, so it's the staff report. Got it, okay. There you go.
So what I would, what I would like to recommend is that we, the third one downwards, Sequa Waterfront Transition Plan, $300,000. I would just like to broaden the description a little bit to something like planning and design of the waterfront transition plan, which could include Sequa, but it doesn't limit us only to Sequa, if that is a pleasure to council. And leaving the amount of money the same.
I would wonder how that number was come up with in connection with Sequa?
Jeff Bond, our Community Services Director, I'm sorry, Community Development Director, that he estimates that's what it would cost for the design level necessary in the Sequa review in order to have a complete Sequa document.
Okay, but, but he was, was he specifically talking about only Sequa, or also the?
Yes, Sequa plus the design necessary to complete the Sequa. So if we reduce that or use it on something else, then we would just have to find funding for the Sequa elsewhere.
So, I mean, if we, if we expand the number of things that that $300,000 would cover, we'll still have to come up with some of that money from someplace.
Right, and I think I'm just wanting to include more design work than just what I understood as part of Sequa, and maybe I don't look at Sequa quite as broadly as I should.
No, you're right. Design wouldn't be part of, some design work wouldn't be part of the Sequa process, but do we, is it a realistic expectation that we'll have a substantial amount of money to apply to anything besides Sequa, I guess would be the question.
Well, if we don't do design, do we have enough work to do, do we have enough to
So what, I heard a question there of, what's our anticipation of getting money for the design work at this point?
We've been looking, we've been partnering with the East Bay Regional Park District. We've tried to think outside the box, be creative, talk about money that BCDC might have, the Coastal Conservancy, and to date, we just haven't, it's just really hard to find grant money. People want to build things that you can see that are vertical, that are in the ground and so forth with grant dollars, so it's really hard to find grant dollars for a Sequa document. So this is the, you know, I will put this, add this, this is the number-one thing that is, that needs to be done in order for us to start implementing the transition plan.
But, but how about the planning side? Do you think we'll?
As it pertains to Sequa, my underst, again, we've looked for money anywhere for any reason, but anything that seems to be associated with the Sequa process is really hard to find. So you couldn't find like $100,000 to do the design, $200,000 to do the Sequa. So far, we haven't been able to separate those and find anything. And we can keep looking, we can postpone doing it. It's really a matter of council's prerogative in terms of how quickly you want us to get started. If this was approved this way this evening, then we could start preparing an RFP and start the ball rolling if that's what happens tonight.
So, let me just step back a little bit. So how much design has to happen as part of the Sequa process? I guess that's the piece I'm a little...
Yeah, minus Jeff. He's actually at the BCDC meeting tonight, representing us. They're presenting the waterfront plans there this evening. He thought it would be roughly $200,000 for the Sequa documents and $100,000 for the design, but again, in order to get Sequa done, you have to have design documents that are pretty well progressed.
So, a total of 300, and that's what we have here.
Yes, yes. If you, the CIP reserve, for instance, if you have an idea of a project you would like to have council consider down at the waterfront, we do have $316,000, almost $317,000 in the CIP reserve, and that's allocated towards CIP projects, but so far, hasn't been allocated to a specific project. So there's a little bit of flexibility there if you didn't want to reduce the $300,000 for Sequa, waterfront Sequa.
Well, personally, I feel better thinking that of the $300,000, $100,000 could be used as design as opposed to the actual Sequa document.
Right.
That feels a little better to me, and so, you know, maybe it's okay the way it is if that's understood, but it seems, perhaps that's not understood, and it should say including design or something. Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah.
And I, you know, I like the fact there's that extra CIP money that is also there, so I think both of those things are good. so I think both of those things are good. Any other comments?
I, well, I had a question, you know, looking at the amount, $69,400 that was allocated to police equipment preserve, another 69 for, for fire department, another 69 for Public Works and 69,000 for recreation equipment, very Solomon-like, but it, I mean, I wondered if there was, was this based on need or were you just trying to come up with, everybody gets equal shares and?
Pretty much making sure the children all don't fight over who got more. I'm, I'm just kidding, they don't fight. No, simply took, taking what I know needed to be funded or had already been funded, and then I took the, the remaining amount and divided it among the, the departments, because we don't have really a proper and thorough asset replacement program, and each year we do constantly come up with things that aren't necessarily CIP-worthy, but a slide breaks at the, at the park, or there's a lot of mandated, and if you look in the CIP, 2016 to 2020 CIP document, you look at our unfunded programs, especially with our fleet for Public Works, Police and Fire, and we really do have a pretty significant amount of, of unfunded fleet replacement that we have, and equipment replacement we have in the years to come.
But are those all sort of equal? I mean, that's, that was the part that, I mean.
Well, in years past, for instance, the Recreation Community Services didn't get as much as the other. For, in years past, Public Works got the majority of it. I think they got $115,000 last time, so given that we didn't have as much left over this time, I divided it equally.
Okay.
And then you move it around if you need to?
If we need to, we can, we can come back to council. These will be used. The nice thing about this is all the contracts, all the actual projects they get assigned to come back for council approval again. So this is really just a, an allocation of it to be specified at a later date. And also, later this year, we will have our update for CIP coming to you and we can take some of these funds and actually put them into projects for your further approval.
Are there any other council questions? I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for final comments. Anybody? Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the CAFER and file the, accept and file the CAFER report and adopt Resolution 201743, allocate new year-end fund balance? And I would say with the additional words on the Sequa to include design.
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Let me get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to Good of the City. This is a time for persons desiring to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comments or to a future agenda Hopefully you have speaker cards and come on up.
Yes, hi, I'm Brian Neal, your favorite customer at Good of the City. I had a few things I wanted to talk about, some pretty exciting news, that Saturday I attended a press conference that Barbara Lee held in regards to a new effort called Summer of Resistance, and Albany is kind of in the spotlight right now. The president of our Democratic Club was invited to speak with Barbara Lee, and I think this is coming out of the rapid growth that's happening in this club, and so if you want to find more about it, come check out the club. And we're going to have a meeting June 15th, and we're also electing more officers. On the less pleasant note, just to kind of dovetail off the CERT presentation, today there were two arrests made in relation to the Ghost Ship fire, and as everyone knows, we lost a, someone that worked here in Albany to that fire. And it's just a reminder that with our pursuit of housing and backyard units and so forth, that we make sure we're providing safe housing and that if we don't, that there are potential consequences. And then finally, I wanted to talk about the Good of the City itself. I don't know if it's my imagination, but a couple other people in town have mentioned it to me, that the timing of the Good of the City seems to be drifting toward the end of the meeting, and if that is the case, that, that's probably not good for public participation, which is very important. I am noticing the meeting looks kind of empty right now, so I think having it at the end makes it less desirable for people to come and comment, and then not as many people find out about the other things that are going on, so. Anyway, that's what I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to reiterate what Brian brought up about the timing of the Go to the City. Last time I spoke at the Go to the City last month, it came at the three-hour mark. I checked it on the internet, and, you know, people, it definitely is, inhibits people coming. And at this point, it's at the hour and a half mark, and I don't understand how the change in the process has happened. It was even just last year, it, presentations or however they were placed, didn't, were, were done in a way in which the Good of the City was really at the beginning. So is there a way that you can clarify for the public as to what the policy is going to be in the future about this in order to facilitate participation in this part of the program? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, city council and Albany residents at home. I would like to add on, yeah, the public comment used to be number three or four right after roll call. That was great. Also, I have a bunch of other things to talk about. The Albany library sure could use a color printer. Let's say you've got some school projects or reports due, maybe color printer, or you're a professional, maybe you're an attorney or a lawyer, and you got, you know, or maybe you're a photographer, a color printer would be nice. Also, the Albany Farm is one of the, I think a California Gold. I just came up with that one. Okay, so school zones, Albany needs school zones, and about the $100,000, we're always looking for money. Jerry Brown and I, he sent me an email saying the state has a grant, it's $100,000 a year to put up for school zones. We get 10 crossing guards with the grant from the state. Also, the Albany Showers Thursdays is a very great program. It's once a week, and anybody can go there and take showers. If you're Albany a resident and your plumbing's backed up, you can go down the Albany Pool and take a shower for free there, 1:30 to 2:30 on Thursdays. Let's see, the Memorial Park Garden, I spoke to somebody there and there's no water. I think Public Works or somebody turned the water off, and so the lady who's running the garden at Memorial Park next to the baseball field would like the water turned back on, please. Also, Solano is a 25 mile an hour zone. That's pretty fast for Solano. I mean, we've got kids crossing the streets, we got, it's a, I say we should make it to 15, because then people will slow down a little bit, make it safer. We should make the public safe. Also, repave Solano would be great. Solano Stroll is a big hit. Solano, the current situation with Solano Avenue right now, I've counted at least over 100 potholes and over 1,000 cracks that people could slip, trip and fall over and possibly sue the city. So I think we should just repave one street, it's just one street. City's got hundreds of street, just one. Also, Sanctuary City, we're a sanctuary city now, it's great. For the homeless crowd, let's see, the only homeless shelter I know in Albany is actually the lobby right here at the police station. I don't know how we could be a sanctuary city if we don't even have a homeless shelter, but I think it's great. I think, you know, it's always something to look forward to, and, so Sprouts is great. I'm a volunteer at the Albany Farm, and there's a creek between the farm and Sprouts, and there's all this trash and plastic in the creek, and there used to be a fence up that said, "Do not remove fence, protected area," and all this stuff is going in. Let's see, we got that metal thing that came up, that they came here to the city hall, it's like a metal tree or something over at Sprouts. When they came here, it was white, and they got some gray metal.
You need to finish, please.
Okay, and that's about, that's about it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ariana Dukes. I wanted to introduce myself. I work for Senator Nancy Skinner, so I wanted to show my face. I'm sure some of you know her pretty well, but I'm happy to be a point of contact moving forward as well. I live in Berkeley, but I've been spending more and more time in Albany, which we, Mayor McQuaid and I went to a really nice coffee flower shop area type of thing on Solano, so that was lovely, and wanted to give my condolences again. So I will stick around hopefully till the end. I have to jet up to Sacramento tomorrow morning, so I'm going to be trying to get out relatively early, but I appreciate the work that you all do and I look forward to continuing this relationship.
Thank you. Okay, moving into unfinished business, Resolution 2017-16, initiating the process to consider amendments to the Albany Municipal Code relating, related to marijuana regulations. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, and I'll be doing the staff report from over here as we have some technical difficulties on the other side. So before you this evening is the second opportunity to discuss potential marijuana policies in the city of Albany. In general, the city does have to have some new regulations on the book to be consistent with the changes in state law as part of Proposition 64, which was passed in November as part of the election. In your staff report, we've included a resolution of intention which will initiate the process to consider amendments to the municipal code as it relates to marijuana regulations. So for your review this evening, we're asking for some simple initial policy direction regarding the regulation of recreational and/or medical marijuana, and that is either to continue the prohibition that's currently in place or to legalize it within, within the city and craft regulations related to legalization. Just to refresh the council's memory on present conditions in the city, in 2007, the city council enacted a medical marijuana dispensary ordinance. This ordinance created a conditional use permit process which would allow one medical marijuana dispensary within specific zones in the city. Ultimately, the process proved to be challenging and did not result in the issuance of use permits for dispensaries, and in 2011, the council at that time adopted an urgency ordinance which prohibits medical marijuana establishments in the city, and it's still in place today. So we brought this to the council in April of this year, and at that time, the council recommended that the discussion be continued to a date uncertain pending some additional information to be provided as part of the report and also to have some additional staff present. So initially, the council asked that Mike McWhiston, our chief of police, be present to respond to questions and concerns that the council might have. Council also requested additional information on revenue from cultivation and sales. There was a question regarding the legality of requiring net zero energy as part of a use permit, kind of a big picture issue of how marijuana consumption relates to the city's existing smoking ordinance, and police service costs versus the amount of tax revenue Just very briefly, the police department continues to have concerns about legalizing the medical marijuana or commercial sales cultivation dispensaries and related law enforcement issues that may be related to that, including calls for service and potential criminal activity in the city. With respect to revenue, we included some additional articles for your information just to have as background. I've been doing some research, you know, it's, it's pretty well-known that the marijuana industry is primarily a cash business, so subsequently, it's difficult to accurately track sales and ensure the appropriate amount of taxes which are collected. And in general, jurisdictions are experiencing difficulty collecting taxes and have incurred additional costs for security and collection because of taxes and fees are typically paid in cash. As an example, the city of Oakland has had to construct a vault within one of their facilities to store the cash which is collected from the permit fees and tax revenue. This, as you would imagine, has to have some high level of security and it's staffed by armed guards. With respect to revenue and calls for service, it's hard to determine the number of calls that would be received from a sales or cultivation establishment, so it's a little difficult for us to give more precise information since it's a bit of an unknown. With respect to net zero energy, if the council were to permit cultivation and retail sales with a use permit, conditions could be included to address public health and safety concerns as well as environmental protection. For example, issues related to excess water, energy, energy consumption could be addressed as part of the conditions. And in general, when regulating private business activities, the city has discretion to formulate appropriate conditions of approval. If the city were to require net zero energy consumption for a business which sells marijuana, we would have to make, we would have to have a reason and also make a finding within that approval for treating the business differently from other businesses which engage in other types of retail sales. And this would be something, there was a question that had come up, how, how that's enforced, and essentially it's local, and it's part of the findings of approval that the Planning and Zoning Commission would make. With respect to the smoking ordinance, there is a provision, Section 11362.3A, and I've included that in the staff report. It's part of the California Health and Safety Code and was specifically included in Proposition 64, and it states that AAMUA shall be construed to permit any person to smoke or ingest marijuana at any public place nor smoke it or marijuana products in a location where smoking tobacco is prohibited. So in other words, where you have provisions on the books related to tobacco consumption, this provision extends to that. So even though we haven't formally amended the smoking ordinance at this point in time, we do have protections through the state which give us some authority to regulate it similarly. And just for the council information, an amendment to the tobacco ordinance encompassing this is expected to come back to you in July. And just reiterating again, it's going to come back to you. Just to refresh your memory, with Prop 64 became legal in November, November 8th of 2016. The state right now is working on licensing requirements for commercial recreational marijuana activity, and their licensing is not going to go into effect until January 1 of 2018. This was done with the intent that jurisdictions would have a window of time to prepare regulations regulating recreational and medical cultivation and sales on a local level. One other part of the AUMA is personal cultivation. Up to six living plants may be planted, cultivated, harvested, dried or processed within a single private residence by a person over the age of 21. It's legal for an adult to possess up to 28 and a half grams of marijuana or up to four grams of concentrated marijuana. Municipalities do retain the authority to regulate or ban personal outdoor cultivation. Municipalities can reasonably regulate, but they may not ban indoor personal cultivation. We mentioned this at the, the last meeting, but just to reiterate, the police department has concerns about outdoor cultivation, and in conferring with police staff, both community development staff and police, police department do not see a benefit to a formal permitting program for indoor cultivation. The concern really is one of having public information with site-specific addresses, where plants are, and not wanting to, you know, create issues, you know, having someone come in do a public records request, that type of thing, and we have information available. Under the AUMA, a jurisdiction retains the authority, following authority for commercial cultivation. We can regulate or ban it. Municipality may permit or restrict deliveries within the city limits. Municipality may also limit the number of establishments within the city, and if commercial cultivation is a permitted use, the jurisdiction may impose either cultivation tax, manufacturing tax, and a business license tax. And a big picture snapshot on taxation, in November of 2010, Albany voters approved Measure Q, which approved a business license tax of $25 per $1,000 of gross sales receipts at for-profit dispensaries and $25 per square foot at a nonprofit dispensary. Since we haven't had any operating businesses, we haven't had the opportunity to either impose or collect. impose or collect this tax. In doing some research, trade organizations have indicated that the typical sales average is around $974 a square foot. So using a 1,000-square-foot dispensary, a business license revenue to the city would be approximately $24,000. The city would receive an additional $10,000 in sales tax revenue from recreational dispensaries.
Oh, sorry, that last item, that, is that coming from the state?
I think it, it comes from the state. So the state's taxing it at 15%, and then it would have some redistribution, I believe.
Okay, yeah.
Be the city's share of the sales tax, the city's 1% share of the sales tax.
Of the state's sales tax. Of the state, it's actually not a, it's, isn't it excise tax?
Well, they, they're, no, we wouldn't get a cut of the excise tax except through applications for grant funding, but the, the state would continue to levy the current sales tax if we get a sliver of that.
Oh, oh, I see, I see. It's just, okay, it's just the pass-through of the, okay, got it.
Thank you.
And so with that, we're asking for guidance with respect to whether you want to continue the prohibition or legalize it. And so Resolution 2017-16 is a resolution of intention. Depending on what that outcome is this evening, we would go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to craft amendments to Chapter 20, Planning and Zoning of the Municipal Code.
Thank you. Are there questions from council?
Yeah, two questions. One, would, it would be okay for us to prohibit or allow medical marijuana, but prohibit recreational? Is that true?
I, I think you would have that authority.
Yeah.
If you direct us to do so.
Thank you. And then I understand that the staff didn't think it was worthwhile to permit indoor cultivation, but did, would staff think there'd be any, any good to come out of just regu, some sort of regulations or guidelines to be written into the books that, you know, we wouldn't intend to enforce, we wouldn't intend to go into people's homes, but just guidelines for, for safe cultivations, like, you know, don't, don't gang too many grow lights together and connect them to, you know, insufficient extension cords or something like that?
I might defer to Craig on that, but I, I think we could probably do something perhaps in an advisory capacity.
Yeah, the city could certainly demonstrate, distribute informational materials on safe cultivation, you know, don't have 20 things plugged into one electrical cord, things of that nature. Wouldn't need to be incorporated into regulations or ordinances, but that could be something that could be done by staff at the direction of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, a few, a real basic question, but off the bat that I've always wondered about. You're allowed to now grow six plants in your house and you can possess approximately an ounce of pot. There seems to me a kind of discrepancy. If you take one plant and pull it out of the ground, that's gonna weigh more than an ounce, but you can have six of them, but you can't have more than an ounce of pot.
The ratios work out. I, I assume when you dry it out, it doesn't weigh that much, but I really don't know.
I, I wondered if there was something in Proposition 64 that speaks, speaks to that, but.
Perhaps it's outside of the house.
Okay, so is that you can have an ounce outside of the house, but in your house, you could have six plants and a plant, you know, I happen to know, could actually produce much more than an ounce of pot. So there is a bit of strangeness there, I thought. Okay, so under 64, we can't tell somebody they can't, we, we can't start a law that prohibits them from doing six plants in their house, but we could have some regulation that required a, a home permit. Is, is that correct?
If that was the council's desire, you could direct us to craft regulations to, to have permits for indoor cultivation.
And is it, is the city uncomfortable with doing anything like that? I know the city's uncomfortable with, with allowing commercial cultivation, but have we, has any consideration been given to having some, some influence on home cultivation? And?
Staff.
It's, it's really at the council's discretion. When I, when Chief McQuiston and I talked about it, I mean, I think, I can tell you just, I had a general concern about having that kind of information on the books and someone walks in off the street and says, "I want a list of all the addresses of people doing indoor cultivation." We legally have to turn that over to them, and my concern is one of safety and privacy. You know, if, if that is the regulation that, that you'd like to have, we can certainly do that, but then it does create this other issue where we don't have any mechanism to protect an individual's privacy if it becomes part of a public record.
Yeah, I, I can see that. I can see, that is a concern. And perhaps Vice Mayor Pilch's idea of some kind of voluntary information that we give out might be a better way to address that. But, you know, there's, you know, there was something in there about that they can't use more energy than what you would think would be normal in the house. There are concerns about mold and fungus, water usage, and if we don't have some sort of regulatory thing in process, how, how do we even tell that or how do we manage that?
I don't, I don't have a good answer.
Yeah.
But I think it also gets, you know, if, if you're gonna go to that level of, of, you know, monitoring conditions, I mean, it's not typically, it's not something I would expect to go out and have an inspection to assess conditions on any sort of ongoing basis. I mean, by comparison, it's, it's obviously a little bit different, the example I'm gonna use, but when we have animal permits, so someone comes in and they have backyard chickens, we have that information on file, we charge them a one-time fee, but we never actually go out and inspect the animals' premises. We take the applicant at their word that the coop is where it is and that they're gonna treat the animal, animals humanely.
So it would be a complaint-driven system. So if somebody's getting, you know, large odoriferous smells of pot coming from their neighbor and complains about it, then there might be an investigation. Okay. All right, well, that's, that's my immediate questions, anyway.
I was just gonna say, we don't, you know, people could be houseplant crazy and they could have 150 houseplants and moldy walls and wet floors, and we don't attempt to regulate that. So I'm not sure what, you know, how, it seems to be specifying growing conditions is, is something to be regulated by some types of plants, but not other types of plants opens up a kind of sticky can of worms. That's, I think that's Craig's I disagree face.
Don't really have an opinion on that. I think that staff concerns were not really based on legal input. It's really more about whether you'd be able to protect the safety and privacy of individuals if the city's collecting this information, whether we'd have really the staff to go out there and do inspections and enforce the regulations.
Michelle, do you have any questions?
No.
I, I have a question about the smoking ordinance. I know we'll need to update it. There was a provision that some parts of it won't go into effect until next, next March, the not-new units, because we wanted to give people time to change, to change their behavior. Could we put a prohibition on marijuana even within those units effective now?
You could.
Okay.
Effective now, when the ordinance goes into effect?
Yeah, not, not waiting another nine months or whatever. Okay. Okay, is there any public comment?
Good evening, I'm Brian Beal, again, one of your favorite customers. I just had a few thoughts on this. I haven't been following the issue in too great detail, but my basic input is that to however possible, we should be consistent with state law. I'm sure that a majority of Albany voters went along with the new, the new rules. But that said, I think there's maybe some impracticality associated with having a dispensary here in Albany. You define a good location that's not close to school, and I think probably ran into that before in 2007. So that's a challenge. I definitely don't like this idea of a permit because you're probably gonna create more crime than you're going to prevent. And finally, I wanted to say that, you know, my biggest concern is selective enforcement because traditionally, this law against marijuana has been viewed as a racist law that because white people, rich people, use drugs that are much more dangerous and get away with it because they have money, and it's often targeted at African-Americans, so. But that said, I, I think, you know, again, we should follow the state policy. If we don't have a dispensary, people are gonna go to dispensary somewhere else. And then in regards to the issue of the smoking policy, I think it should be the same as tobacco. I, actually, I work in Berkeley where there's a lot of this going on. It's a concern to me because I waited at the bus stop, there's people smoking cigarettes, there's people smoking marijuana, and I don't necessarily want to be breathing that before I go to work. So I think it is important to, to continue the part about the prohibition in, in public areas where essentially someone's not, not just gonna be consuming it themselves, but forcing that consumption on someone else. So that's, that's pretty much the general, the general direction I would hope the council goes in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Francesco Papaleo. I'm speaking for the Albany Property Rights Advocates, and the, as I spoke before at the previous meeting, I'm pleased to see that the issue of smoking inside the apartments is going to be expressed, and I want to reiterate that we have no problem with the use of marijuana, only and particularly medical. And I want you to be explicit as crystal clear as possible in the verbiage so that landlords can display to tenants that they may not smoke inside their units. And that would have to include those for use for medical use. There are many alternatives to smoking for medical use that, that would provide the same benefits. So I would hope that you understand that you can't create exceptions because just about everybody can get a medical marijuana card if they want. I'm glad the fire department's here because one of the issue that's been come up with landlords is that tenants, when they smoke, will end up disabling smoke detectors. And the new smoke detectors that we have, I don't know whether the photoelectric are more sensitive to particulate matter. I'd like to, we'd like to find out that. That should be something that should be studied and understood because they're now required in all of the, in all homes and units. And I want you to understand that the law now requires that the smoke detector be sealed battery for 10 years. So that means if a tenant wants to disable or needs to disable it, because it goes off when he starts smoking or she starts smoking, that they'll have to literally take it off the wall and hide it from the smoke. And the chance of it not going back up again is a distinct possibility, and that's a fire hazard. So please give property owners the rights clearly written in this ordinance to, to display to tenants how they need to act in, in the apartments. I, I've heard of people growing marijuana in it, in their apartments, and it can be quite odoriferous when in a closed space, and they have heat lamps, and that can create a nuisance as well in terms of long-term moisture and mold and smell inside the apartment. So how does a landlord handle that appropriately? Energy use is another issue. I hope you understand that grow lights use extraordinary energy, and when people start doing that, they're going to use intense energy that will, could cause a fire if not properly wired. Thank you.
Thank you. Saying no other public, I will bring it back to council for final comments.
Well, I'll make a few comments. I think I, I was one of the council members here who was, thought we should be looking at this in light of 64. You know, I think from the things in the packet and other things I've been hearing it, the idea that this would be a, a major economic boom to the city doesn't seem very likely. And so my interest in, in some kind of either allowing cultivation or a shop is, has diminished considerably. I, I did come away with the thought, though, that, and, and I brought up this idea of permission for home cultivation. There really still are a whole lot of unknowns about this or how this is gonna affect things. I am presuming that we'll know more in a year or, you know, at the end of 2018 after this all gets going. So I, I would think that it may make some sense to be able to come back and, and see what the effects have been of people growing in their back closet or wherever they're gonna grow six plants. You know, one of, one of my issues is this whole idea of energy usage, and if, are we gonna kind of be undoing our, our carbon reduction goals in the city if all of a sudden 10% of the city is growing pot in the garage? Will our energy spike? So even though I understand the hesitation about allowing people to grow outside, you know, perhaps we could be coming up with crafting something that, that deals with this energy usage issue. You know, I think ideally would be some kind of enclosed greenhouse that they don't have to turn on lights in order to grow pot.
Well, certainly one of your options this evening is to, there's no rush to make the yes or no decision. So you could opt to continue the prohibition of it and update our ordinances that would reflect that with the understanding that we come back to you annually or come back to you next year, come back to you in 18 months with more information from the other cities that are, that have implemented it to see where, where the problems are. It is a very new thing, a very new thing.
Yeah.
And it's okay to let the bigger cities, you know, take the hit on this one and gather the information, and then we can, we can come up with something that fits Albany. That is an option.
You know, one question I have that maybe the, the chief would be able to, to answer. There are marijuana dispensaries in Berkeley, there are some in Richmond. Is there any data on, on what the income versus costs are to the city in terms of police services, et cetera? Has there been any feedback from Berkeley, Oakland, Richmond, or any of the, any of the other cities?
Not that I am aware of. I haven't specifically asked for that, so kind of a cost-benefit analysis, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you think anyone's gathering that information on a state level or?
Probably not. Probably not, but I'm, I'm speculating.
Yeah. I mean, I, that, I think that'd be really pertinent thing to know is, you know, I, I've heard mention that Target brings us a whole bunch of income in terms of sales tax, but it also requires a lot of officers going down there to deal with shoplifting, whatever other disturbances are going on. So, you know, it seems to me that we should, you know, get, get that kind of feedback, and, and there have been marijuana dispensaries for a while now in different cities, so some of them must have some idea of what's, what's going on.
Well, they also have disincentive in some matters to not notify the police when something's going wrong. So the, it's not really an apples-to-apples to compare a traditional retail or commercial venture with one that may not want the police showing up when something goes on. So in terms of measuring that, I guess you would, you could actually measure, you could quantify the actual number of times that police were called, but it can be difficult to measure what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, it, it may not be a precise number, but, you know, some idea of what the cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of anybody that's looked at that.
And, and I guess... And I guess, a question for either you or Greg. If we did have some kind of permitting process, would that have to be public? If some, if a homeowner were to say, "I want this," or could you have something that the police knew who had those permits, but not necessarily posted somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, in order to, you're talking about for indoor cultivation?
For, yeah, for homeowner.
Personal cultivation. Yeah, I mean, the general presumption under the Public Records Act is the information's public. You'd have to justify it under, there's a balancing test under the Public Records Act. And so, you would have to show that the public benefit in disclosing that information is clearly outweighed by the privacy and security interests and keeping it private. So, it's possible to come up with a justification, but it might be subject to being challenged, because there's not a clear standard. And then, the courts tend to lean in favor of requiring disclosure.
Okay. Because, I mean, you could certainly make an argument that there's safety concerns for somebody who would actually do the right thing and pull the permit.
Yeah, safety concerns, privacy concerns. But it's not like sales tax information, where there's state law that prohibits disclosure of that information. So, it would be in a little more of a gray area.
Okay.
I just wanted to add to your green housing. It does seem to say that cultivation in a greenhouse on the property, even if it's not physically part of the home, as long as it's fully enclosed, secure, and not visible from public space, is okay. So, that we have to work.
Yeah. I mean, if somehow we could be encouraging that kind of thing, rather than something that might not be safe, either because of energy usage, or mold, or whatever.
Other comments?
A question. Do apartment dwellers have an automatic right to have plants for their personal use in their apartments and grow them there? Or does the landlord get to say?
That's a good question. I think, under the, my understanding of Prop 64 is it allows personal cultivation. So, that means it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a criminal violation for someone to have plants in their personal residence. I'm not sure that necessarily overrides the property right of a landlord to negotiate a lease provision where they don't allow houseplants, or?
Don't allow pets.
Or don't allow pets. So, it probably would be something that'd be negotiable as part of the lease between the landlord and tenant.
It seems like in the fact sheet from the League of California Cities, it, one of the questions is, can a landlord ban the cultivation, smoking, and marijuana on his or her property? The answer's yes.
Right.
An individual or private entity may prohibit or restrict personal possession, smoking, cultivation, on the individuals or entities privately on property. And I think, Francesco, to go along with what you're saying, one of the things that I highly recommend that we do is create a fact sheet, both for the landlord's property owners, to have them understand their rights and responsibilities, but also for all of the citizens of Albany, so they understand the law.
Yeah. And just a comment. I know chlorophyll doesn't need green light, which is why plants bounce green light back out into the environment. So, now sophisticated growers are using these low-energy, blue and red LEDs, which don't use a lot of energy and don't create any heat. So, actually, it's a little safer and lower energy than we like, sort of like the people who grow it. But, so, I don't know if that makes anyone feel any better, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the tip.
You can buy them at?
If we sort of don't do anything right now, and we kind of wait and see, for the most part, without, except for maybe changing our smoking ordinances to come in line, once 2018 hits, is there anything we would be prohibited from doing then? What are we?
Yeah, there would be a risk of taking no action, as far as commercial or recreational facilities. If the city has no ordinance on the books that regulates or bans sales operations, then they would be able to come in and establish themselves in any zoning district that permitted that type of operation. So, the state could go ahead and issue permits, starting January 1st, to permit, you know, sales and cultivation operations of a commercial nature, and the city would be left with no regulatory way to prohibit that.
So, if we take the step of prohibiting this, we're good. But can we change that after, if we decide in 2019 that, oh, we're?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the city could put a ban or other regulations in place, and then change them at some future time, as the same measures suggested. You could provide that, say, at the end of 2018, the staff would come back to the council with a report on current state of their, state regulation, and whether it was warranted to revisit or amend the ordinance. You wouldn't be prevented from changing those regulations in the future. And one other thing I want to mention, I think this was touched on, the staff, the written staff report, but the state is looking at a trailer bill that would modify some of the state regulations. The league has weighed in on that, asking for amendments. So, there's, there's some regulatory clarification that's going to be coming forward, both from the legislature and from the agency they've created to issue administrative regulations.
Was this the one that Jerry Brown had put together? I think it was.
It's, yeah, it's, the Brown administration has proposed a budget trailer bill that would change the law in a way that the, I'm not fully aware of the details, but the league has some objections to what's being proposed. They think it'll weaken local control.
But so, sort of the rule of thumb is, if in doubt, be more restrictive now, because we can relax the restrictions later, but we can't tighten them up later?
Exactly. I mean, if a facility is permitted to begin operations, it'd be very difficult to shut it down later. But if the city were to establish a ban on facilities, and later on decide to loosen it up and allow some facilities, that would be easier to do.
Rochelle, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a question about the outdoor cultivation, for pers, outdoor personal cultivation. The indoor personal cultivation is in effect now. People have a right to have six plants in their house, right now. But what about outdoor? Is that permitted unless we prohibit it? Or does it become permitted in, does it become automatically permitted in 2018?
As I understand it, it's permitted unless it's explicitly prohibited.
So, it is permitted right now to have outdoor plants?
In 2018?
I'm looking at Crickies.
Our ordinance doesn't permit cultivation, so.
But I think under the AUMA right now, where you can have personal indoor cultivation, I think it also extends to outdoor unless it's explicitly prohibited.
I think that's right. I'm not positive about that.
So, that's a decision it seems like we need to make in pretty short order, if we don't want outdoor growing.
But that outdoor growing could happen in a greenhouse situation?
Yes, would be considered indoor, I believe, the way they define it.
It would be considered indoor, okay.
I will make the comment that I think outdoor, having outdoor cultivation is a bad idea. I understand the energy savings argument, but, you know, having people climbing fences to get at other people's plants, you know, that kind of thing just sounds like a bad, a potentially, I'd like to hear what our chief thinks about that. But I, my gut reaction is, that's not a good idea.
I certainly agree. That's one of my concerns as well, is if it's there, it may be enticing to someone to trespass on someone's property and help themselves, I guess. And a big part of our business is often dealing with neighborhood conflicts, and some of the aromas that come from the plants, I guess, are pretty strong. I have a neighbor in my neighborhood that does this, and some of the neighbors don't like it, and it ruins their time in their yards, apparently. That's, from the police perspective, we're just trying to not have neighbor conflict.
Can I ask, so if somebody's growing it in their garage, or closet, and it's leaking out of the house, and the neighbor complains, how would you handle that situation?
Well, I don't think we've handled it yet. The last time we handled something like that, it was against the law.
Yeah, but I mean, under this new, you know, reality.
It's a civil matter. It's a noncriminal, it's a civil matter. They'd take, they can pursue a tort action, I suppose, against their neighbor, just like a neighbor of, I don't know, doing anything else that annoys them. I don't see us having a whole lot of ability to.
But don't we have nuisance ordinances, in some cases, for like, sound and?
We do. And we have, you know, we have this idea of a nuisance, but I don't know, you know, the police generally don't enforce that. That's more of an administrat, in fact, I believe it is called an administrative nuisance in our, in our code. It's not generally the police purview to enforce that sort of thing.
But in any case, it seems much less likely to bother the neighbor, the neighbors, if it's in the garage, or in the greenhouse, as opposed to being out in the open in a backyard or side yard.
I think, I think it's going to be, time will tell. You know, it just seems like a whole lot of stuff here that we'll know more in the end of 2018, perhaps, but, a lot of questions in my mind.
Yeah. I had some comments, if I could. Just wanted to touch on a few things that were in the packet. One, regarding the Sierra Club article that's sent around about the, that the regulation of cultivation needs to be, or cultivation needs to be regulated. I think the consensus is that the Prop 64 will greatly reduce illegal grows, if not eliminate them, well, probably not eliminate them, but greatly reduce them, and that's the whole, one of the reasons the environmental community likes Prop 64, likes decriminalization of marijuana. In terms of the collecting, collecting of the taxes in cash, obviously, a big problem. But this, our city does not collect any taxes. It's either done through the county, or through, through contracted agencies, from what I understand. So, it'd either be the county or municipal services that would be responsible for that. I do not know that municipal, I was corresponding with Penelope about this, I don't know that municipal services collects, does cash collection on behalf of any jurisdiction yet. We just don't know at this point, I believe. Greg?
I believe the city does collect its own business license tax.
Oh, okay.
The city treasurer administers that program.
Okay, okay. So, I'm wrong. There are a few taxes.
This would be a business license tax, if the voter-approved tax were to go into effect.
Sure. So, there's business license taxes, but then the ongoing, like, sales tax revenue, that sort of thing, would likely be an outside firm doing that collection. So, we might have to deal with some cash collection issues. That definitely is a concern. I like the staff recommendation that if we decided to do this, that we restrict all activities to the CMX zone. It sounds like, seems like there would be no other place you'd want to have dispensaries or cultivation. I would be in favor of that. And I agree that this does not appear that, unless we do cultivation, or large cultivation, I agree that this is probably not any major economic boon. That said, I remain supportive of us allowing cultivation, and both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana facilities. I think that, as a city that cuts it really close to the edge in terms of revenue, we should not, we should not refuse any source, we should not blindly refuse any sources of revenue. And even, you know, however small, we need all the revenue we can get. We just, we just do not have the big business tax base. That said, if we were to do this, what I think we should do is to make sure that the fees we assess, and that the taxes we assess, are more than adequate. Make sure that they're very high, more than adequate to pay for any city's, any of the city's burden, in terms of enforcement, in terms of permitting, all, any administration costs. And that would have to be a given. We would not want to shortchange the city, and not want to, not want this to be at all a money-losing proposition. The other thing that concerns me is that if we have an outright ban, we lose all ability, as far as I understand, to benefit from state tax revenue that the state will be collecting. So, that, that we will not get any part of if we do a ban. So, both of, not being able to get the revenue and losing out on the state's revenue concerns me a great deal, again, because I just don't think we should be shutting out any, any sources of revenue, however small.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? If, one of the things mentioned in there is this idea of deliveries. And we, we could ban deliveries into the city of Albany from other jurisdictions if they had a, could we, or, that's my understanding. We can't stop people going through Albany, but my understanding was that we could stop them from delivering in Albany?
Yeah, I think we, I think the Prop 64 would permit a local regulation that prohibits deliveries. That might be a very difficult thing to enforce, but.
Okay. I, I thought I read in here that you could put something like that in the book.
Yeah, you could put it on the books. Yeah.
But it would be hard to enforce. But if we, but if we put something on that said, "Well, we'll allow it from other jurisdictions," would that then allow us to get some of the state tax money?
Take a look at that, but I think if there were a ban on cultivation and sales operations, that would probably trigger the disqualification from eligibility for grant funding.
Well, if people were buying, say, online, and then got a delivery into Albany, we haven't, there's, you know, I know, I know.
That's a nuance I haven't thought about, so we'd have to take a look at that. But I think that my working assumption is if the city bans commercial cultivation and sales operations, that we would not be eligible to apply for those grant funds.
Well, okay, so, let's say hypothetically, if we allowed some kind of retail marijuana operation, we would only get a proportional amount of what was being sold in Albany back. We, you know, we wouldn't get more than whatever that, 15%, or some part of that 15%.
I don't, I don't know how the state's going to handle the grant eligibility. They're going to have, you know, pot of money, and they're going to have a variety of things competing for the use of that money.
So, I'm hearing there's just more unknowns.
No pun intended there.
Yeah, lots of unknowns about this.
And so, that, yeah, that's unknown, how competitive the city might be in seeking those grant funds, or whether we would have programs that we actually want to fund with those monies, if we were eligible to apply for them.
Well, one thing to consider is that if we, as a small, if, as a small city, if we impose fees and taxes that really do reflect the cost to our small city, those fees and taxes might be quite high compared to surrounding cities. And they might be a disincentive for people that want to do business with Albany. But yet, we would still have it on the books that we allow it, and would not be, would not be disqualified from state funding. Something to consider.
But would we get state funding if we didn't have a actual store? If we just said, "We allow it, but it costs you $100,000, you know, to open up a store, so we don't get any stores?"
Yeah, I don't know how the state would view that, in terms of, you know.
Well, I think, yeah. You, you probably open yourself up to a lawsuit if you, like, imposed draconian fees like that. But if it was reasonable, then I, my understanding is that the state monies can still come.
It's like the USD paying farmers.
Just to be clear on the tax portion of this, it's important to make a distinction between fees and taxes. The fees can only be charged to recover the cost of service to that business. The fees can be whatever they are, the city's costs are. The taxes are at a set level, under the voter-approved taxes on the books. It's, I think it's about two and a half percent business license tax. So, that is whatever it is, unless the council goes to the voters and asks for an increase in the tax. That's not related to service costs.
Oh, I thought I read something in my packet that there are three different taxes that we could impose.
I think you're right.
Yeah. Let me see if I can find that.
Yeah, the city can impose taxes, but it requires voter approval.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Well, one other thing to consider, as you're thinking through the timing, it's already June. We have this deadline of January 2018 to get whatever we want on the books, if we want some local control to prohibit. By the time it goes to, if council chose tonight to prohibit, and it goes to planning and zoning, and they work through it and bring it back to council, I mean, chances are, it's going to be towards the end of the calendar year, or certainly September. it's going to be towards the end of the calendar year, or certainly September, you know, or October before anything could happen to prohibit. And we're not going to be collecting any money then anyway, yet we've done our due diligence to just at least keep control in Albany. Then, you know, we let that January 2018 date go by, we've got control over what we do instead of the state, and then that gives us a more, just, you know, I don't think we're going to, based on the numbers we have, even if we wait one year, we're not going to be losing a ton of money, yet we can look at things and view things and see what is happening in other cities.
That is persuasive to me. I mean, we, we're such a small city, there isn't a reason, certainly with these numbers, there's no reason for us to try to be a pioneer. There isn't going to be any difficulty for people living in Albany to get either medical or recreational marijuana in nearby cities. So my inclination would be to extend the prohibition and see what happens with cities that are a bit larger than we are and how it plays out in terms of both administration and impacts, and then make a decision if we want to start it here. I would like to see us in the, sooner rather than later, adopt a prohibition on outside cultivation so that we don't have young people scaling fences to get it.
Or old people.
Other people's plants. Yeah, well, I just see young people as being a particularly likely.
I would have to say on our street, the deer would get it before any of the young people, whatever.
And the turkeys.
Stone deer, what a concept.
Deer stumbling around, what a terrible thought.
I would agree with that. I think Rochelle's got that pretty right. You know, there's just so many unknowns here that we're going to have to wait for a while to see how it works out on the state level, because a lot of these questions, I don't think anyone's going to answer before January 1st.
I'd like to add, though, a couple of things. One is, I think it's important to look at similar sized cities and not just look at the bigger cities and see how they do, but how are cities like us doing?
Yeah.
And, and I just also want to say that Albany prides itself in two, well, a lot of things, but two main things. Having good schools, being kid family friendly, and being green. And I'm not sure that commercial marijuana comes under either one of those two umbrellas. So it's kind of a step away from what we pride ourselves on.
Although I'd hate to miss out on the opportunity to, just like I return tax dollars to Albany by, buying my Albany Ford here, I'd love to be able to buy my Albany Bud as well, but I think the comments of the fellow council members are reasonable, and I think that the direction that Rochelle laid out seems, seems reasonable at this point.
So could we get a motion to extend the prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries, expand to include recreational operations, including an outdoor ban? Is there anything we want to add to that? Oh, the smoking ordinance, do you want, should we?
That's already in process, working with staff on that and planning to bring it back in mid-July.
And including the smoking ordinance can be doing it now rather than waiting that year for that one piece?
Yeah, that'll be up to the council.
Do we not have prohibitions on delivery in Albany already? So do we, and we also want to continue that? Are we able to continue that? Yeah. So we're in a funny position where we want to do the status quo, but enforcing the status quo means making a bunch of changes, because if we do nothing, then the status quo goes away. So I just want to be clear that when I say I want the status quo, I mean, I want us to do whatever we have to do to maintain the kind of restrictions we have now, for the reasons that the other council members mentioned. And I just want to point out that, you know, there is a, upstairs at 99 Ranch, there is a medical marijuana dispensary, and if somebody tried to put a medical, or any kind of marijuana dispensary into CMX zone, it would be 200 yards from an existing place where people could buy marijuana anyway. So I'm not sure it'd be a great business decision.
So the council members' remarks actually bring up a question for me. I thought that we didn't necessarily, I thought that we actually didn't have to do anything with our smoking ordinance, that the state law would take care of that, but we were going to add to our smoking ordinance anyway, just to make it clear that marijuana smoking is not prohib-, is prohibited wherever tobacco smoking is as well. It's just a clarification, it's not actually a change that we have to make. That's correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay, just so, just so folks know.
So somebody doesn't have to cross-reference our ordinance to state law, figure out what's permitted and what isn't.
Right, so that's already taken care of. And the other one is, was delivery. Now, I didn't hear anyone speak until Councilmember Barnes spoke about the prohibition of delivery. Do we have to go that far? What do other council members think? I don't, I don't quite understand where that would, where that would be necessary.
Well, I'll chime in. Delivery is something that makes some sense to me. I, I would like to hear why, why the chief is more hesitant about, on the delivery thing, because, you know, we now have started a company in Albany that delivers beer. You know, that seems to be the wave of the future for retail. We get our goodies from Amazon, we, you know, the whole world seems to be based on stuff arriving at your door. If you could do it with alcohol, should we consider doing it with pot? It keeps somebody from driving, potentially driving high, which seems like a, a good thing.
I'm not clear on, you're attributing to me that I did not want delivery?
Well, I thought, I thought you had some hesitancy about, about deliveries of.
I haven't actually given that much thought. I think we currently prohibit that.
We do, but is this something?
It's difficult to enforce.
Well, the, the delivery of alcohol, I think, is highly regulated, isn't it? I've used that service, Hopsi, and they require an adult, someone over 21, to be at the door to accept it, or they, you know, they don't deliver.
Right, and you could have the same kind of requirements.
You could have the same sort of thing for marijuana delivery.
Yeah.
Do we prohibit medical marijuana delivery? That actually seems kind of important, that if somebody is a housebound cancer patient and needs medical marijuana, they should be able to have it delivered.
I'm not sure how the ordinance reads right now on delivery.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at it. It's, it's, it's not a day-to-day issue from an enforcement perspective, and it's not, you know, the spirit of what the council that passed the ban intended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I prefer to leave out the, the delivery portion at this time. Leave out the banning of delivery.
Well, it sounds like we'd have to undo that law if we already have it on the books that you can't deliver marijuana.
We can certainly, I hadn't viewed that as a central issue, but we can certainly review the ordinance and, you know, advise the council, you know, the planning commissioner of council on what the current prohibitions are and what the options are for changing them to either expressly authorize deliveries or to clearly prohibit them. That could be a policy option for the council when this comes back.
There must have been some rationale in the past in, to ban deliveries. Someone thought about it at some point.
The main focus really was on dispensaries and cultivation, the existing ban.
So could, we still need a motion to do something? Okay, I'll, I'll do it. All right, so I move Resolution 2017-16, initiating the process to consider amendments to the Albany Municipal Code related to marijuana regulations, with direction to staff to continue the prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries and expand to include recreational marijuana operations, including ban on outdoor cultivation? Does that language work? Okay. Very good.
About outdoor cultivation for personal use would be, would be prohibited, as well as commercial cultivation?
Right, I was just thinking, just in general, outdoor cultivation.
I'll second that.
May I suggest a friendly amendment that, that the, what the staff, that the, what the staff prepare include a revocation of the prohibition on delivery of marijuana, unless, although if subsequently the staff finds some reason why we should not be permitting deliveries, to say so. It seems to me important that at least medical marijuana be available by delivery, and I don't see any reason not to permit it with recreational. If we don't, if we prefer people not be growing in their houses with a lot of energy and everything, if they're, you know, if they can have it delivered, that might actually be a, a way to reduce the number of personal grow operations that are occurring, if we want that for some reason.
It sounded like there was some confusion, though, as to whether delivery is currently banned or not banned, which is why I was, why I didn't say it, and it could come back to us with that language.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Do we record a second for that? I didn't, okay, thank you.
Thank you, though. Okay, so the motion passes. We have no new business, that was postponed until June 19th. Other business announcements of events, future agenda items, the only thing for me to add at this point is the city council, next city council meeting is June 19th, and we'll do the adjournment.
I have the privilege of closing tonight's meeting in honor of Joey, Mayor Peggy McQuaid's daughter. Joey passed away on May 22nd, and we were all deeply saddened. Joanne Morris was born in San Francisco on August 26, 1965, and she died on May 22, 2017, at the age of 51. She was adopted by Peggy McQuaid on June 4, 1991. Joey attended Social Vocation Services Program in Oakland and previously attended Over 21, a program for developmentally disabled adults. After adopting Joey in 1991, Peggy not only welcomed the challenges of raising Joey, who had cerebral palsy and intellectual disability, but also encouraged Joey to live her life to the fullest. Joey enjoyed going out to eat, especially ice cream, attending the Solano Stroll and events in Memorial Park. She and Peggy loved to travel both in California and on many occasions around the country. Joey loved visiting her many friends, including the four-legged ones. Joey quickly, very quickly, became a very valued part of the Albany community. She was not limited nor defined by her disability, but was rather a model of strength and determination. Her smile was infectious and her beautiful blue eyes twinkled with mischief. She was loved for her indomitable spirit. Peggy worked at the Albany Pool for 25 years, and many pool employees and patrons remember Joey from that time. Many say that Joey taught them that she was just like them. She's taught them to see past the disability to the person inside. Joey's strong will and stubbornness enabled her to live a long and healthy life, which allowed her to be a cornea donor, giving two people the wonderful gift of sight. A number of quotations for friends, from friends, were shared with me, and I'd like to share them with you now. "I am grateful for the effort Joey put into teaching me to love someone profoundly challenged. She taught me to look deeper. Her laugh was incredible. She always brightened the room when she came in. Joey's personality and humor lit up the world around her. We are all richer for having her in our lives. We loved your beautiful blue eyes, sparkling smile, and your perseverance at life. Please join me now in a moment of silence in honor of Joey."
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned.